Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Quincy Planning Board meeting of February 8th. That's for a roll call.
Member Glurt present?
Member Camiso present.
Member Barry present? Member me present. The first item is the minutes. I think everybody had the minutes for the meeting of January 11, 2017. Continue motion after to approve. Still move? For a second?
Second.
For those in favor? Aye. Now, I gotta wait. Let's go to the business. I want to circulate the endorsement of the 151 Hancock Street Site Plan Special Permit that the Board approved. Just ask for signatures. The other item is review and issue a recommendation to the City Council on the City Council Order 2016-74, which was introduced by Council Paul Mucci to amend the City of Quincy Municipal Code, Chapter 375 zoning chapter, section 9.0, administration as follows. Adding section 9.4.9, minimum mandatory conditions, 9.4.10 remedies, and 9.4.10 appeals to the Quincy Municipal Code. It's my understanding that the Council, at its last meeting, approved this amendment, so with amendment, with conditions, actually with cooperation, if you will, with the city solicitors. So I would ask for a recommendation to the Council that we recommend the approval of this, subject to the conditions that were worked out with the City Council and based on the City Council vote in Monday night's meeting.
I'm not going to make a motion barring any further comments from the Department, but...
Okay. So motions or a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. No, we're close to 7:05. That's close. I'm gonna start slightly early. Continued public hearing for 31 through 39, Newbury Street Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case 2016-11, which was continued from our January 11, 2017 meeting. The applicant, Mr. Harrington?
Mr. Chairman, good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Harrington. My law office is at 21 McGrath Highway, and I represent the applicant Heat Treating LLC in this application. We were here approximately 30 days ago to give you an update on where we were on this project. This is a multifamily residential project in the Business C zoning district. We have a 51,000 square foot lot, and we're proposing 72 units with 118 parking spaces. This project has been to the zoning board, and it's been approved for a special permit for residential and Business C, as well as a floodplain special permit. It's also been to the Conservation Commission, and it's been approved with an order of conditions for the construction of this building. So this project, as you know, a 42,000 square foot lot is required to have project in Business C by right. We have a 51,000 square foot lot. We didn't require any variances from the zoning board of appeal for this project. The maximum FAR is 3.5. Ours is 2.05, so it's significantly less than what the maximum size of the building could be. And we have 750 square feet of land per unit. We also have 118 parking spaces, and 108 are required, so we have 10 extra parking spaces in addition to what's required by the ordinance. Green space is 100 square feet per unit, and we have 210 square feet per year. So we believe that this is a good project. It's a good reuse of this property. This site is contaminated, and this site is going to get cleaned up as part of this redevelopment program. We've had meetings with Mass DEP, with the person who was in charge of the Brownfields section of the Mass Department of Environmental Protection. We've met with her to talk about how to clean this site up and advance the project at the same time. We've had some very positive meetings with her. I'd like to introduce our architect, Arthur Chu, just to very briefly talk about his building and the perspectives that were requested of what this building would look like once it's built from the Naposet River Bridge. Thank you.
Mr. Chu?
Thank you. For the record, Arthur Chu, one building for Quincy, Mass. We have 18 units per floor, six floors total, with two parking levels of parking. Because it's a difference in grades, one level of parking is at the higher grade, and you drive it to the other level of parking at the lower grade. Last time we were here, we talked about creating some perspectives to see how the building would fit in. One thing I'd like to say, this is coming over the Naposet Bridge. This is actually looking back over your shoulder after you pass it. It's not, I think that the way you really see it is on the lane going towards Boston. So it actually would set back further, but what we like about it is it doesn't stand out too much in the street skid. There's guest parking outside, which would primarily be more practically used for at the densmore side of the building. And we take up pretty much the space where they just can build on it for this redevelopment and safety plan.
Our LSP, William Baird, is here. If you have any specific questions for him about the environmental condition of the site or exactly what he's planning to do. We've had numerous interactions with the departments on their comment letters, as well as the city's peer review engineer, and responded to a couple of peer review comment letters. There's a few items that are still outstanding, but I think we've managed to answer the vast majority of the questions that were asked about the project. The site includes, one of the biggest improvements on this site is something that's actually on, Newbury Street is 35 feet wide. It was laid out, we had 18 hundreds, and it was laid out as a 35-foot wide street. So what we're proposing to do is, we're proposing to improve Newbury Street all the way to the edge of our property, so the street is fixed and paved, at least to this point. There are other lots that are located down this end of the property. One has a permit to be developed, and the other two are currently undeveloped. So if something happens to those properties, then the rest of Newbury Street can be dealt with as part of those properties. But from our lot line here, the whole frontage of Newbury Street is going to be paved and rebuilt, so it's a proper street 35 feet wide. The sidewalk is on our property, so it's in a sidewalk easement that runs along inside the property line, so the sidewalk doesn't take up any of Newbury Street. So the entire 35 feet that's available is available for two-way traffic, as well as parking on one side of the street. So one of the improvements that we're making to this street is that we're getting all of our guest parking off the street back here in this parking lot. Industrial heat, if you go down there on a workday, there are cars that belong to the workers in industrial heat along Newbury Street. There are others parked back here on Denzmore, as well as some of their trucks. All of that will be gone, opening up those streets for lawful on-street parking. So all along this stretch here will be approximately a dozen, 10 to 12 new parking spaces on the street that can replace any other parking that's displaced anywhere else in the neighborhood. We also have our civil engineer, as well as our traffic engineer, all here this evening. So if you have any specific questions for them, we'd be happy to entertain them. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Harrington or of the architect? Do you know? Okay. Yeah, one of them is a peer review.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Eric Girard. I'm a civil engineer with TEC out of Lawrence, Mass. We were selected to do the peer review for this project, primarily to review the site, site design, stormwater management, traffic, transportation, and pedestrian connectivity for the project. We have provided three peer review letters. We've been coordinating with various departments, including the planning department, with these letters, as well as other city departments. In addition, with the applicant, there has been some discussions back and forth. And as the attorney mentioned, with DEP, we had a meeting with the Brownfields Development Team to discuss the outstanding contamination issues on the property. Throughout the process, they have satisfactorily addressed many of the comments back and forth with the revised designs, including some stormwater management, which will also be coordinated with the LSP where to make sure that there are no adverse impacts to the infiltration needs that they are providing. We also coordinated significantly on the pedestrian connectivity, with this being a residential development, to get the people from this development to Hancock Street to connect into the rest of the city. So they have improved pedestrian connectivity by providing sidewalks along the frontage, as well as along the easterly side of the property to connect to Denzmore Street. It's our understanding that the LSP concerns and the contamination will be wrapped into any sort of conditions, as well as any of the minor outstanding recommendations that we had provided. So if the Board has any questions, I can certainly do questions for Eric.
I think when it was first introduced, my concern was, and I addressed it to the LSP, namely residential on a contaminated, a semi-contaminated site. What I hear, not only you, and more importantly, from the department and the meetings that were held, but I'm happy. No hearing now? Okay. It is a continued public hearing, so I'd ask anybody that wishes to speak, come forward, identify yourself. For those that don't want to be recorded or don't want to speak, there are sign-in speakers forward against sheets on the windowsill. Anyone wishes to speak? Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Third and last time, anyone wishes to speak or anyone wishes to be recorded? Okay. I have a letter that was sent to the Board. I won't read it all in its entirety. It's a letter that's signed by Matthew Nassif. I'm not spelling it, I'm not pronouncing his name. It basically talks about ownership and lack of notice to abutters. It's my understanding that we've satisfied the notice to the abutters, but I would just have it entered into the record. Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Just a couple of questions. We've gone through this case, this project, a couple of times. I just want to, I guess, maybe confirm a couple of things. In terms of the streets, are they one-way? So the two main streets are Newbury and Denzmore?
Yes.
Can you remind me, are those one-way streets?
They're both two-way streets.
They're both two-way streets?
Yes.
Okay. Great. And then, the other thing I just wanted to confirm is that this seems like an ideal facility for bicycle, bicyclists, bicycle storage, and confirming that there is bicycle storage.
There is, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions to Board members? Can I entertain a motion to close the public hearing? Still move? Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The Department? Have a recommendation?
Yes, we do. Before I read the recommendation, I would note that the Department, along with the Department of Health, met with peer review and the applicant with DEP, so it was all-inclusive, and we had Cindy Giacosta, our own Department of Health, part of that meeting, and she also helped construct the special conditions relating to the environmental cleanup, so she has seen them. Secondly, we also, the applicant coordinated with the engineering office as it relates to roadway mitigation tied to this project. The applicant has agreed to some improvements of the entirety of the roadways up to Hancock Street, and the final details of those will be worked out with the Public Works. And again, I spoke with the city engineer this afternoon on those conditions, so I just wanted to assure the board as they hear them that both the Department of Health and DPW has seen those specific conditions on this project. With that, and the review you heard, and the peer review reports, the Department does recommend the Board vote to approve the site plan review in accordance with the Quincy Zoning Ordinance, Section 9.5.1, subject to the following special conditions. Number one, the applicant shall obtain all necessary variances from the zoning board of appeal. Number two, the applicant is subject to the City of Quincy Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance and shall be responsible for adhering to the decision of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Committee for this project. Number three, the applicant shall adhere to all comment letters issued by the city departments and peer review consultants, including the Public Works Review Letter dated October 10, 2016, Department of Health Review Letter dated October 17, 2016, the city engineer's peer review consultant, TEC Review Letter dated February 8, 2017, and the city's traffic engineer Letter dated February 1, 2017. And number four, the applicant shall submit to the Director of Inspeccional Services a copy of the revised stormwater plans that are part of this decision to determine whether the order of conditions, DEP Number 0591386, issued by the Quincy Conservation Commission on December 7, 2016, needs to be amended. Number five, the applicant shall install a new eight-inch water main on Newbury Street from Hancock Street to the property as shown on the approved plans. The applicant shall coordinate with the Quincy Department of Public Works on abandonment of the existing water main and connection of service laterals. Number six, the applicant shall establish a five-foot sidewalk easement on 31 Newbury Street-26 Denzmore Street property, the entire length of frontage on Newbury Street as shown on the approved plans. Number seven, the sidewalks shall be constructed by the applicant at the applicant's expense. The sidewalk materials shall be concrete with granite curbing as shown on the approved plans. The applicant shall coordinate with the Quincy Department of Public Works and the city traffic engineer on final specifications. Number eight, the applicant shall pave Newbury Street for the entire length of the frontage of 31 Newbury Street, 26 Denzmore Street, as shown on the approved plans. The applicant shall coordinate with the Quincy Department of Public Works and the traffic engineer on final specifications. Number nine, the applicant shall work with the Quincy Department of Public Works and with the abutters at 17 Newbury Street and 55 Hancock Street to design and install a sidewalk on the public way portion of Newbury Street from the applicant's property to Hancock Street. This section of Newbury Street is a public way. The applicant shall work at the direction of the Department of Public Works and city traffic engineer. Number 10, the property identified, number 10, the property is identified as a contaminated site by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and is subject to Mass General R Chapter 21E and the Massachusetts Contingency Plan 310 CMR Section 40. Number 11, prior to the issuance of a demolition permit, the applicant shall conduct a hazardous material survey of the building. Contaminants of concern include asbestos, petroleum, cyanide, and other chemicals used in the manufacturing process, PCBs, and heavy metals. Remediation, removal, or mitigation of all hazardous materials identified in the hazardous material survey must be completed prior to demolition. Number 12, the applicant shall remove the former Quench Oil underground storage tanks abandoned in place under the building during building demolition. Number 13, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall engage a registered LSP to conduct a Phase II comprehensive site assessment of the property. The Phase II assessment shall be in conformance with the Massachusetts Contingency Plan and shall include, but not be limited to, the following. A, subsection A, identify all floor drains and associated piping within the building. Sample sediments and liquid if present within each drain. Subsection B, assessment of potential cyanide impacts to soil groundwater as needed at former cyanide salts treating room noted on Figure 2 at the eastern end of the building. Subsection C, installation of deeper monitoring wells in known source areas area of former solvent degreaser and former hydraulic lift is recommended. Subsection D, analysis of soil and groundwater samples collected under Phase II should include extractable petroleum hydrocarbons, volatile organic compounds, semi VOCs, MCP14 metals, and cyanide. Subsection E, it is recommended that groundwater is sampled quarterly for a year to gain a comprehensive understanding of site conditions, seasonal fluctuations, and rates of degradation. Subsection F, extent of off-property impacts must be determined, including the need to assess potential vapor intrusion to residences at 31 Denzmore Street and 39 Newbury Street, and impacts to nearby wetlands. Condition number 14, during construction of the proposed building and related site work required for construction, the applicant's LSP shall remove impacted soils for proper disposal in conformance with the Massachusetts Contingency Plan. Number 15, the applicant's LSP shall provide copies to the Health Department and Planning Department of all reports, plans, and status reports filed with the Department of Environmental Protection for all phases of the site assessment and remediation. Number 16, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the LSP shall file and receive approval from the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection a permanent solution as defined by the Massachusetts Contingency Plan for the property, indicating that the property complies with the regulatory requirements for residential use. Number 17, stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds. 18, the applicant shall be required to obtain any necessary sewer connection permit and street opening permits from the Department of Public Works prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number 19, the applicant's LSP shall review the proposed stormwater management system and infiltrating devices to confirm that no adverse impacts will occur at the property with the installation of these devices. The applicant shall submit any required changes to the City of Quincy Department of Public Works for review and approval. Number 20, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to Inspeccional Services Department at the time a demolition permit and the building permit application is filed. 21, the applicant shall develop and submit a dust control plan to the, develop and submit a dust control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to obtaining a demolition permit and building permits. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number 22, the applicant shall develop a rodent control contingency plan prior to the commencement of construction activities on-site, which will include the name and contact information for an on-call pest control company. Said rodent control plan shall be developed and submitted to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to obtaining building permits. 23, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the engineer shall provide certification that all accessible on-site routes, including sidewalks, ramps, walkways, and handrails, are constructed in compliance with the American with Disabilities Act and Massachusetts Architectural Access Board current regulations and guidelines. 24, the City of Quincy may at its discretion use consultants to supplement city staff for, but not limited to, the purpose of environmental remediation and site work. The independent engineering peer review consultant review escrow account shall be fully funded to the amount of $15,000 prior to the issuance of building permits. 25, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall furnish to the planning department and city engineering office digital file as-built plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bonds, benchmarks, defining the total site facilities and rights of way. 26, the hours of construction activities and delivery of materials will be as follows: 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Saturday, and all construction deliveries shall be prohibited on Sunday unless the same are approved by the Chief of Police for Sunday activity. That concludes my recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any questions from the Board members? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion, will I? Based on the conditions articulated by the Department?
So a second?
Second.
Discussion? The Chair just has a comment, and that is, this is a prime example of agencies at state and city level working with the departments at the city level to develop what I consider is a sound decision and something that's good for all the parties concerned. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
items that we're gonna continue to our next meeting, so I don't want to have people hanging around for something that we're not gonna consider. The first one is the continued public hearing for 57 Quincy Shore Drive with a Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case Number 2016-16, which is continued from our December 14 meeting. So I'd entertain a motion to continue this one until our March 8, March 15 meeting. Is there a second? Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
The next one that's being continued is a continued public hearing for 4373 Dennis Ryan Parkway, Significant Consistency Planning Board Case 2016-COC-03, which is continued from our December 14, 2016 meeting. So a motion to continue that to our, March 8, uh, strike that, March 15. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the third and last one is 92 Sagamore Street Site Plan Special Permit Planning Board Case 2016-18, which is on our agenda for tonight. They've requested a continuance to March 15, to March 15, Board meeting. So a motion? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, let's go back to the agenda again. The next item is continued, it's not, actually, it's not continued public hearing because we closed the public hearing. It's the 23 to 31 Bridge Street Site Plan/Special Permit Planning Board Case 2016-12, which was continued from our January 11, 2017 meeting. I'd ask the Department to reread its recommendation from that meeting.
The Department recommends that the Board vote to approve the site plan review in accordance with the Quincy Zoning Ordinance, Section 9.5.1, and issue a special permit under Section 5.1.17 parking waiver, subject to the following special conditions. Number one, the applicant, number two, the applicant shall appear before the city's historic district commission and shall be responsible for adhering to the decision of the Quincy Historic District Commission for this project. The applicant shall continue to work with the Adams National Park Service during this Number three, the applicant shall continue to work with the MBTA to ensure that construction of the proposal along with the MBTA redline does not interfere or adversely impact the operation of the line. Number four, the applicant shall adhere to all comment letters issued by city departments and peer review consultants, including Inspeccional Services Review Letter dated October 19, 2016, Health Department Review Letter dated October 17, 2016, Department of Public Works Review Letter dated December 13, 2016, city's engineering peer review consultant review letter dated January 10, 2017, city's traffic peer review consultant letter dated December 12, 2016, city's traffic engineer letter dated January 11, 2017. Number five, prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit, the applicant shall provide the planning department with fully executed lease agreement, which shall provide for the exclusive use of seven parking spaces on the property known as 7 Thayer Street for a period of five years. Upon the expiration of five years, the planning department will review the use of these spaces and determine whether an additional time is needed for the use. and determine whether an additional time is needed for the use of these spaces. If the planning department determines that there is continued need for these spaces, the applicant will forthwith provide the department with an executed five-year extension of the lease. The executed lease shall be recorded with the decision. Number six, the applicant shall submit to the Director of Inspeccional Services a copy of the revised stormwater plans that are part of this decision to determine whether the order of conditions, DEP File Number 0591378, issued by the Quincy Conservation Commission on September 7th, 2016, needs to be amended. Number seven, the applicant shall be required to obtain any necessary sewer connection permit and street opening permits from the Department of Public Works prior to the issuance of a building permit. Number eight, the applicant shall submit a construction management plan to the Inspeccional Services Department at the time a demolition permit and the building permit application is filed. Number nine, the applicant shall develop and submit a dust control plan to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to any site activity. Said dust control plan is to be implemented during any site activities to ensure compliance with state air quality regulations. Number 10, the applicant shall develop a rodent control contingency plan prior to the commencement of construction activities on-site, which will include the name and contact information for an on-call pest control company. Said rodent control plan shall be developed and submitted to the Department of Health for review and approval prior to obtaining demolition and building permits. Number 11, upon the completion of construction and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall provide the city with a check in the amount of $25,000 to be used for roadway improvements. Number 12, upon completion of the project, the applicant shall furnish to the planning department and city engineering office the digital file as-built plan showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bounds, and benchmarks defining the total site facilities and rights of way. The hours for construction, number 13, the hours for construction activities for delivery of materials will be as follows: 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday. All construction and delivery shall be prohibited on Sunday unless same are approved by the Chief of Police for Sunday activity. That was the recommendation.
Mr. Stevens, it's my understanding that the Historic Commission has considered this, and there was a vote. Can you? Oh, okay. All right. I have a executed document for a certificate of appropriateness pursuant to Chapter 40C of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Historic Districts Ordinance of the City of Quincy. The Quincy Historical Commission hereby issues a certificate of appropriateness for the work described in the accompanying application and listed exhibits. If any conditions are imposed, they shall be enforced in the same manner as in the Building Code. The applicant may proceed with proposed work provided a copy of the certificate is filed with the inspector of buildings and issues a permit when required. Building permit is not required for exterior painting and some other work, but a certificate is necessary and should be delivered to the contractor. The certificate is valid for six months from the date thereof. The application was approved. The wet Newport Avenue elevation be presented to the commission indicating the final use of the clapboard on the projecting bays and turning the corner on Bridge Street, with an articulated in-and-out corners line and fiber cement panels on the recessed portions of the facade. Submitted drawings to be accompanied by a final color and material samples for the commission's records. Condition two, the existing 28 Mission Ave Brevity be maintained in good health during construction or replaced with similar-sized eight-to-12-foot evergreen species with a potential 15-year maturity of 25 feet, as stated at the presentation. Three, deciduous growth in the MBTA right away by a good-faith collaboration with the Boston property development be cultivated, maintained, and enhanced to maintain seasonal green buffer screen as rendered on the drawings A601. And number four, as stated, all rooftop condenses, solar panels, and other rooftop equipment be masked by the height of a parapet from the eye level as viewed from the rear of the Adams House. And it was approved, a certificate was approved on 1/22/17. I have that entered into the record. I have one other piece of correspondence, and that was emailed, and even though the hearing was closed, we've always allowed email correspondence to come in afterwards. It's a letter that was addressed to the director, Mr. Fetzes. Dear Mr. Fetzes, I was at the planning board meeting on 1/11/17 in which the board did not vote on the above proposal. I'm very concerned about the recent development in the area. I'm not against the construction, as I know housing is needed. I'm more concerned with the overnight parking. Our neighborhood has and will be inundated with additional vehicles parked and built on the side streets. Most of the vehicles belong to the residents of the Hamilton on 1025 Hancock Street, which choose to not pay for the space that is available to them on-site. I know the city has bylaws with regards to parking that must be met before approval of a project, as allowed to proceed. The problem, as I see it, is that when parking is not included or deed it, as the condos are at the old central building on 1022 Hancock Street, people will choose to park on the street. I'm of the opinion that developers should be, not be allowed to make parking a separate fee, as it will only add to the parking crunch from the surrounding neighbors. Sincerely, Jim Nichols, 86 Butler Road. Okay, we have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve as outlined by the department.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.